I would like to call the work session with Planning Commission to order at 6:00 PM. We will be going over the 50-year plan. We've got a lot to cover. I'd like to give you as much time as you need, so let's begin. Community Development Director Lori Oliver-Josepher. Oliver Joseph will take it from there.
That's an interesting, yeah, no, that's like a Bennifer. That's No Worries. It's a lot of names, so. Well, thank you, Mayor, Council, and Planning Commissioners. Thank you all for being here tonight, and I am going to hand this over to our capable consultant, Beth Goodman, from Echo Northwest, to go over the slideshow tonight.
Thank you very much for having me here. As I walk through the slideshow, please stop me when you have questions. I can't necessarily see our folks over here, so somebody will wave at me, I assume.
Can I ask one as we begin? As I'm learning, is there anything you want us to get out of this tonight? Is this informational? And is there anything we need to look forward to ask questions next round? Or are you just going to provide some information?
So this is informational at this point, but if you have questions about what we're doing and why we're doing it, those are important things. Lori, was there anything else you were looking for?
No, I think it's mostly just to bring everyone up to speed.
Okay, so this is a long project. It's spanning four years, all told. This is, sorry, three years, all told. This is the middle of it. What we've done at this point is we've developed a community vision for the 50-year plan, looked at the growth opportunities over the 50-year period, which we'll be talking about in a few moments, for housing, for economic development, and then for other land use. And I'll explain what that means in a few minutes. Remember that we're looking at a comprehensive plan update, so we're getting more information that will go into the comprehensive plan. We are looking at policy changes, so land use efficiency measures. We're also looking potentially at an urban growth boundary expansion, possibly, and certainly establishing urban reserves, which are where the city will grow over the next 50 years. And then there's a development code update that's part of this also. So that there's a lot in here. We've done a lot. We've got a lot to do. All throughout this, we've got engagement with our stakeholder committee, our steering committee, our SAC, as well as engagement with our decision-makers here, and public engagement through things like the annual town meetings and other public engagement. This is where we're going this year. A review of the technical analysis we've done. I think I just explained all of those. I will take a moment to say the other land needs is essentially all the other stuff that a city needs, a community needs, beyond housing and employment land. So things like land for, you know, municipal services, land for churches, land for parks, other kinds of public land needs. The land use efficiency measures, that's the technical term for it, but basically it means changes to policy that can use land within the SCAPUS urban growth boundary. So we're required to consider those as we look at potential for urban growth boundary changes. So, and it's also a good idea to consider those. So that's coming up soon. And then the urban growth boundary analysis. We've started that work a little bit, so we've got a few things that we're noodling on right now, but we'll be bringing that back to you later on this year. Our public engagement is focused on the community conversations that we had early in the project, which was where our steering committee went out to the public and, well, engaged in conversations about growth hence SCAPUS over the next 50 years. Community events from last year, like the annual town meeting, the farmer's market, and I love the name, the Adventure Fest, where we got feedback from the public on our vision statement, as well as two completed online surveys, again, about the vision statement. And then our stakeholder advisory committee meetings. We've got 10 of them completed. That wasn't all from Echo Northwest. Some of that was for the housing project. But up till now, 10 completed and more to come. So before I go and talk about public and semi-public land needs, are there any questions?
Can we get him a microphone, please?
Back to the mic, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Question I have is you've completed the community conversations at some point. And a living plan?
So it is a living plan in that SCAPUS will certainly look at updates to the information that we're putting in here periodically. So in other words, SCAPUS is going to need to do a new economic opportunities analysis one day. Maybe it's five years from now, maybe it's a decade from now, but at some point you'll need to do a new housing needs analysis. These things have to be updated because they're forecasts, and forecasts are educated guesses. So the 50-year plan, what it's really intended to do is allow SCAPUS to begin the planning for where are we going to grow in the next 50 years? What is SCAPUS going to look like in 50 years? And of course, none of us know that. None of us knew a lot of the things that we have now that we didn't used to have, like iPhones and so on and so forth. So the world's, of course, going to change over the next 50 years, but the intention is to start planning for that 50 years, and then the city will be adjusting its plans over time periodically. Any other questions? So we call other land needs. We also call it public and semi-public land needs. So these include things like municipal land needs. We've separated parks and natural areas and trails out. They are oftentimes municipal land needs, but they're also fairly different. And then land needs for semi-public uses, like churches primarily, for instance. So starting with municipal land needs, we talked with Columbia County, the Port of Columbia County, the SCAPUS School District, and none of them will require new land that they know of right now over the next 20 years. So put another way, the school district expects to use its existing land to address any growth, so any new schools, any expansions of schools. That's not to say that, say, the Port of Columbia County identifies a piece of land that's for sale, say, around the airport, that would be beneficial to it, that it won't buy that piece of land. I'm sure that some of those things will happen over the next 20 years, but there's not specific expectations for needs at this point for the next 20 years. When we looked at City of SCAPUS, what we did is we started with the current existing land. So how much land does SCAPUS, the city, own excluding big pieces of land that aren't used for public facilities and excluding parks? Because those are a separate thing. And we said, well, that's a fair bit of land. What if we assume half that land need in the future? And that's how we got to about 30, 31 acres of land needed by the city over the next 50 years. Do we know that that's exactly the right amount of land needed? No, it's a forecast. It's an educated guess. But it's based on information that allows us to make that assumption. The city's going to need about 30 acres of land over the next 20 years. Yes, sir.
Does that include, then, all of the land for our wells, our wastewater treatment facilities, the offices, city staff, all the?
Yeah, it's assuming that you're not going to need a whole new wastewater treatment plant, for instance, because they're big. But you might need expansion of your existing treatment plant, and maybe that has to go on land that the city doesn't own. Or maybe at some point you need a pump station, so you need to buy an acre or two of land for that. If you need to drill new wells, you need a few acres for that. That's all in there, I think.
It's time.
I know this is probably cutting ahead to the addendum packet, but the delta between the land needed in the addendum packet and the land needed here is fairly substantial. Specificity is to the?
I don't know what the addendum packet is. Do you mean by the addendum packet?
Econ Northwest Land Deficit.
Report.
Report, yeah. Is that net difference? Is that land we already?
Are you looking at Exhibit 1?
Yeah.
Okay, that was your question. About 10 more slides.
I had a feeling that it would be getting there.
Yes.
I read everything in advance. I'm like, there's just a weird deficit here.
Yeah, no, what we're looking at right now is Exhibit 2. So we have to build up to Exhibit 1 by going through everything that starts.
Ah, yes, the 2 to 1.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so we'll.
Classic ruse.
We'll get to the, we don't like to keep you on suspense in the end. We'll get to the summary of land deficit in a few minutes.
Thank you.
Certainly. Are there any other questions? Okay. All right, so then looking at land need for parks. This is coming through your Parks Plan, and this assessment is being done by your Parks Plan consultants. And so this table here we're showing you is out of the most recent version of their report. And what it's showing us is the amount of land that is needed for different types of parks. And the conclusion is that SCAPUS will need about 46 acres for parks over the next 20 years. 23.6 of this can be met on existing undeveloped parkland. They've got parkland already. And the city's going to need to acquire an additional 22.2 acres of land for parks over the next 20 years. So this is a change in the version of this that we brought to our advisory committee in January, in part because the Parks Master Plan Project is still ongoing. So this reflects the current information from that. Are there any questions about that? Hopefully, nobody asks me any hard Parks Planning questions, because I haven't been in on that one. So, okay. And then semi-public land needs. What we see is that in SCAPUS, there's about 29 acres of land, most of it for churches, that is currently owned and zoned, not zoned, but owned by semi-public organizations. That's about 3.3 acres per 1,000 people, understanding how many 1,000 people you're going to grow by over the next 20 years. And then over the 30 years beyond that, what we see is we're looking about 22 acres of additional land for public and semi-public, for public, semi-public uses, mostly churches. There is one church that SCAPUS has that has a bigger parcel. It's about an eight-acre parcel. We had a look at that at a request of somebody from our advisory committee, and we said, yep, a bunch of that is unbuilt. So let's assume, let's take half of that out. So it was about four acres out of the number of acres we used in existing parkland, not parklands, church land, in 2022. So we reduced the existing land by that amount.
Lori, what is that zone, that property?
It's residential zoning. I believe it's R4, moderate density.
Which is also a church. I mean, church can?
Churches are outright allowed.
And we'll get into how these different things fall into different zones, which is what Exhibit 1 is all about. Any questions about the semi-public land need?
This is Marissa. I have a question. If you could please just, I'm sorry if I missed it. Outside of church, what is other defined as?
There is going to be nonprofit organizations that have particular, things like the Elks Club and that kind of thing. So nonprofit organizations that aren't caught in other sorts of forecasts for growth.
Okay, so nonprofit?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? Okay. So then we wanted to look at land needs for housing and for employment for the 2043 to 73 period. Because when we did the economic opportunities analysis, we presented it for 2023 to 2043, and then we extended it out to 2073. And something similar was done for the housing piece. And so what we're showing you here is we've added this, first of all, to your economic opportunities analysis document. If anybody wants to see how we embedded all of these things, that is available, Lori knows where it's available from, the city website, I assume.
Yeah, and then there's also a link there, but we do have a project page for the 50-year plan.
And so what we did is we assumed that employment would grow at a slower rate in the out years, last 30 years. The assumption that employment would grow at about 2.3% is a fairly assertive assumption. As you have a bigger base of employment, growth happens slower. So in other words, growing from 10 to 100, it can have a much higher growth rate than growing from 100,000 to a million. So bigger base numbers, your growth tends to be slower on that. That, and when you look at forecasting, the smaller the area, and SCAPUS is a very small area, so the smaller the population, the longer the forecast, the more uncertainty you have. And so it's a more conservative to assume somewhere around 1% growth over the next 30 to 50 years. That's how we came to that. So we're looking at an additional 2,065 employees. And once we put that into our analysis about how much land that would require, what we came out with was you still have a surplus of industrial land, and you have a little bit bigger deficit of commercial land. So by 2073, over the 50-year period, you have a deficit of 83 acres of commercial land. 21 of that is through 2043, and 62 of that is 2043 to 73.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that, how many jobs are forecasted within the city or working individuals?
That's a good question. So that is jobs that are located at businesses in the SCAPUS urban growth boundary. So that's not, it's not where people, people who live in SCAPUS where they work. It is not that. It's people who work in SCAPUS, jobs here in SCAPUS.
It could be people from St. Helen's working here.
Yes.
Jobs.
Yes, exactly. And it's for your whole urban growth boundary, for whatever that matters.
I have a question of staff. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
What is staff's position? Mac? The Rock where he is still down? Well, that, that'll be well within years. But inflation, years as far as jobs go, stuff like. A little bit of air allowed? These figures that are seen here, the 2,065?
So we did look at all the land in our current UGB, and so.
Do you have any projections your own?
As far as how soon that would potentially annex in and develop? Sooner, sooner than you might think. I've heard that there may be a desire for Scott Parker to annex that property in within the next few years. So, I mean, I think that, you know, it's something we might see sooner rather than later. And because that land is already in the urban growth boundary, you know, it was considered in these forecast numbers.
And so if you see faster growth in industrial areas, which you might well, because SCAPUS has unique assets within, I'm going to call you a part of the broader Portland region, because you're just not that, I know. You're just not that far from Portland. Then that is something you'd certainly want to redo your economic opportunities analysis for. It could be that we've just forecast a lot lower growth for industrial development that happens because you have these opportunities. Yes, sir.
Counselor Santiago.
So I was going to wait until your report's done and then go out to the summary, but we stopped. I have a two-part question. In the Page 6, where you're defining the needs for housing and employment, you define commercial. What is your definition? Because, first of all, that's what's your definition? And then, second, have you considered the chances of remote or hybrid?
So are you asking, when you ask about the definition of what commercial is?
Commercial land accommodates commercial employment needs? Just want you to, what exactly you're defined, just?
That's a fair question. So it's things like retail, so, you know, grocery stores, your 7-Elevens, your restaurants. It is, if you have little office spaces around town, it's offices. It's all your personal service care, so your banks, your hairdressers, your childcare, basically everything that is not manufacturing, that is not construction, that is not wholesale trade, and that is not warehouse and distribution, and not utilities.
Most of it's in-person?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so then that's my question, I guess, the remote and hybrid options.
Certainly, those are happening. Those are going to affect some businesses a lot less than other businesses, just like automation is happening. So your McDonald's, in five years, are you going to be ordering from a person or will you be ordering from a screen? And maybe a person would bring it to you. So those sorts of changes are definitely affecting affecting demand and need for commercial land.
Do these employment numbers take into consideration people that are working out of their home?
Yes, but they don't forecast need for more land for that. And they also take into consideration that an awful lot of your multifamily housing goes into commercial. So we've balanced that out and made sure that we're consistent in the economic opportunities analysis and the housing needs analysis.
How does it determine acres per person? When you're talking employment numbers, how does that translate to an acre?
And so you look at typical amount of people per acre, jobs per acre, and you get that from, say, an analysis of where is employment currently located? And, you know, on, I'm most familiar, honestly, with Eugene, because I've done a lot of studying of that. So in downtown Eugene, we have like 90 acres, sorry, 90 people per acre. If you looked at downtown Portland, there's, in some places downtown, there's thousands of employees per acre. So you can look at where employment is located and the size of the site. So if you look at something like warehouse and distribution, what you'll see is typically warehouse and distribution, it's got a big warehouse and big areas for trucks. Typically, it has about three to five employees per acre, two to three sometimes. If you look at self-storage, that's acres per employee. So you've got maybe, you know, one or two employees or three employees for many acres. If you look at the type of commercial, like you have along Highway 20, you're probably varying between 15 and 20 acres, 20 people per acre, 20 jobs per acre. If you have the occasional second-floor space, that can take it up to like 25 employees per acre. That's what we're figuring off of.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So then looking at land need for housing, what we've done here is we have worked with the city's housing needs analysis and taken all the key assumptions from there and filled in a table about that. So you've got about 4,045 new people over the 2043 to 73 period. Once you've used the same assumptions in the, in this analysis as you did in the housing needs analysis, that comes out to about 1,732 new dwelling units over that 30-year period. And so that's how we got to that. And then what we did is we looked at where dwelling units were allocated in the, in the housing needs analysis by plan designation. And we said, let's assume that a similar proportion are allocated to the same plan designations in the future. And then we looked at the densities of dwelling units per acre in the housing needs analysis. And we, you know, did some multiplication and came up, and did a little subtraction, that kind of thing. Came up and found that for low density, for through 2043, you've got a surplus of 38 acres. So that would be, in the future, you'd have a deficit over the next 30 years beyond that of 130 acres. Medium density, you have an existing deficit. You'd have a bigger deficit. So you'd add to your deficit, essentially. High density, you do the same sort of thing. So overall, for housing, we're looking at about 216, that can't be acres, that must be number of dwelling units, 216 dwelling units of deficit in the future. So then what we do is we start looking at all of this in terms of acres. I skipped a table here. We didn't show you it, going from housing to acres. Nope, nope, I'm wrong. That's 130 acres. Sorry, guys. Thinking too fast here, and I didn't mark acres or not. So that's 130 acres of deficit. I was thinking the wrong thing. And so we looked at where your semi-public land needs were. And about half of your semi-public land needs were in employment, and about half, a little less than half, were in your low-density designation. And a little tiny bit was in your public designation. So we allocated out semi-public that way. We kept commercial, land need in commercial, low-density, medium-density, high-density in those. We put municipal and parkland need in the public area, because that's where eventually you'll want it. It may well be that the city buys some land that's in the urban growth boundary now and re-designates it for parks as public, but that's accounted for through all of the accounting of the beans here. So that is how you get to the summary in Exhibit 1. Were there other questions? Because I know there was a question of how we got to that.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I have a question. I've had the privilege of hearing you speak over several years, several topics, several projects for us, and for several new people in the room. Could you describe that you're not, you know, just taking a magic wand or deciding that this day you're going to calculate it this way or use this algorithm that day? Where you really are kind of getting your base for your calculations and how this is not just, oh, well, we decided today we were going to do a 0.5 times, you know, can you?
That is a, that is a fair question. So we don't ever give the answer because we say so. Echo Northwest can be, sound like a little snotty sometimes, because we're kind of a, for Oregon, we're a bigger economics firm. That's not the answer ever. I've been doing this work for 18 years, and I recently looked, and I think I've done something more than 200 projects, mostly around things related to employment land needs and urban growth boundaries and housing needs. So I've done this a lot. So things like when we're looking at densities for employment land needs, that's based on what we see at cities around the state, small cities, big cities. I've also done some research about what you see in other states. Not many states look into this because it's kind of academic, and why would they care? We care because we have urban growth boundaries. I've done enough housing work that I know that looking at something like for your low-density zone, six dwelling units per acre, that makes total sense to me. 15 dwelling units per acre for your high-density zone is a little low, but, you know, that's what you've got right now. That's what you're seeing in your housing needs analysis. That flags it as something for me to think about as we're talking about land use efficiency measures. Is there some change in policy that's needed there? I'm not sure that there is. It's a question that I would ask. Does that get to your, what you were hoping I would say?
I don't know. I'm just trying to empathize with people who maybe unless, you know, listening to you for one of the first times and just hearing magic numbers come out and, you know, you're giving us deficits and really kind of, how does that, how do you come to that conclusion?
How do you come, and how does that connect to reality?
Exactly.
So when we look at. So when we look at, um, we were just working on, uh, some posters for the annual town meeting. When you, we look at the deficit of about 87 acres, um, uh, that's about 22, that's about 2% or 3% of the amount of land you've got in your urban growth boundary, it's a modest deficit. Um, when you look at, uh, the 374, it's, I think somewhere around 15%. If you think about your urban growth boundary and the way that, that the city is using its land currently, we're saying that, you know, in the next 50 years, you're going to need about 15% more land than you have. Um, that may not convey much to other people, but that, that conveys enough to me. See, that's, that's a pretty reasonable estimate when we talk about how much growth we're talking about. Part of that is that you're, you know, most of our urban growth boundaries, when they were set up in, uh, 1980, they weren't really sized for 20 years. Nobody knew what they were doing back then. You know a lot more about, uh, lessons learned, we'll just call it.
You then come back with recommendations down the road, like since we have a surplus of industrial lands, you give us options of, or you can change, you know, look at zoning and to, switching those into commercial lands or, or some of them switching from low-density to more the higher-density to alleviate some of the deficit. I mean, do you come back with eventually recommendations?
That is our next step. And the, the thing I would caution you about is when we're talking industrial lands, some of your industrial lands are what you might call, uh, prized. Um, they're, they're primary, they're, they're, uh, industrial lands that you guys fought for. Um, and they're in a lot of ways Scapoose's future. So, you know, touching land and rezoning it out at the, uh, at the airport is probably not a, a recommendation I'm going to make. Um, but we'll be working with staff to look at, um, there may be some landowners who are currently in industrial, um, that may be interested in, uh, and in a rezoned to commercial and they may be located in an area. Because you, you don't just want lands over on the edge, you know, that, that nobody lives near and that aren't developed, you know, anywhere around them. Those, those aren't good, uh, commercial lands. When you think about it, you want land that is, um, off of, uh, Highway 30, um, or, um, in growing neighborhoods. Um, those are the kind of lands, um, that are, are better policy choices. But yes, we'll be doing that.
For Santiago?
I just, for me, uh, to understand, because as I was reading the report and going after, uh, over the presentation, you're saying that Exhibit One pretty much shows it because in the, um, summary, you said the housing needs is 224 acres. Then I, on page, page seven, it's mentioned the results is need is 230 acres of land for housing development. Was it 230 or 224? So I'm just trying to, and then I'm trying to do the math. Dividing housing, employment and public.
You know, I suspect we've got a typo right there. It should be, I believe, and we'll double-check this, it should be 216. Um, the, uh, yeah, the text is probably wrong there. Mm hmm. It would be right in the table. We'll double-check that to make sure that we don't have anything wrong. Um, part of the problem right now is that some things are, are still in motion a little bit. Like the land need for parks changed substantially between when we talked to them in December and, and now. Because they're, they're still in the middle of their planning. So, yes, apologize for that. Ma'am.
I've got actually a question for Lori. On page 13 of the presentation, is the annual average of new dwelling units needed would be about 58? How does that track with our rate of development, say, over the past couple of years and the new permits?
It seems like, uh, we'll see kind of, uh, a lot of permits issued, you know, maybe over a two-year span and then it'll taper off for several years. So I wouldn't say, you know, it's not like we're consistently hitting 58 or 56 permits per year, year over year. Um, there's some times where, you know, a subdivisional two or two will get platted. Maybe there's a little bit of a slowdown in one and then they kind of catch up together. And maybe that year it's 120 permits. Uh, you know, and then for several years after that, there's not many at all. So it just, it comes in, in spurts is what I've seen over the last eight years.
And that's, that's very typical. That's what you see at most cities. And once you start talking a little bit more multifamily housing, the spurts are, are even, uh, less, less, uh, predictable. Because you have a new multifamily building coming on with 40 or 50 units all at once. And maybe it takes some time for it to be absorbed into the market. Um, and, you know, another year or two or three down the line, you have a, a permit for another, uh, multifamily building of some sort. So it's, it's very cyclical.
Yeah, so it seems we've maybe just experienced kind of a rapid period of growth here recently with Candlelight and others.
Yeah, and you know, those permits were issued a while ago. And so, so far this fiscal year, we've only issued one permit for housing, right? Because it's just, there's that lag of the development and, you know, fini- completing construction and, and, and it just takes a while, yeah.
Do you track more than when you issue a permit than when you take ownership or occupancy?
Uh, we track when we issue the permit on, on your, uh, council update. And so on the last page, you'll see permits issued for, uh, multifamily and for single-family. So that's how you can kind of keep an eye on that.
And in some of the discussions we've had amongst our, uh, economists, um, what they're predicting is a lot less single-family development, not single-family, multifamily development over the next few years. This was before anything happened with the banks recently. Um, uh, so back in January, they were forecasting this. And it's because, um, of availability of lending, um, and because of higher interest rates. They're expecting that to, to last sort of globally across the US, um, uh, in, in most markets for the next couple of years.
Okay.
Yes. I see you kind of alluded to this, I think, at the beginning, but, um, without getting into like the technical aspects of the model, I'm assuming that you're putting Scapoose in this semi-aggressive growth category because of it, it's basically a bedroom community of Portland, whereas like Rainier, Klatskinai not have.
So we didn't do the forecast of growth for housing. Um, PSU, Portland State University, does the forecast of growth for population. And from that, you derive your forecast of growth from housing through assumptions like what I've got on the, the screen right here. So I can't claim, um, uh, I can't claim credit for that. Um, what we, for the EOA, the reason we assumed a little faster growth, um, certainly faster in employment than in housing, is that you guys have a unique asset, a few of them. Your, um, inventory of industrial land is, is just, it's much better than most cities, um, in metro. You're simply up Highway 30, you're so close to the port. Um, and you have the Omic and, uh, PCC and, and all of that 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 brings. Those are pretty big assets. So that's why, uh, we thought that it was pretty easy to justify 2.3% growth rather than a slower growth rate.
And just to clarify or specify, that was based on our historic employment.
It was, yes.
So it's not, it, it is actually based on growth of employment in Scapoose.
Yeah, that's helpful for sure. I, because I was just trying to tease apart, like, a lot of people move to Scapoose because it's a lot of great reasons, but they still commute to Portland. And so you're clarifying that there is, because of that industrial and job growth, okay.
And a lot of the people, um, until we have a, a switch in, 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 unless we have a switch in how we think about where we live and where we work, a lot of the people who are at new employees in Scapoose, um, are going to continue to commute. The fact that you, you, you guys made a change in how you regulate, um, menu, uh, multifamily housing, um, back when we did the housing needs analysis in 2016?
17.
17. Um, and so that's what led to things like the apartments over, um, by the candle. Because before, you only allowed eight units of multifamily housing per multifamily structure, which is very unusual. Um, and so you allowed, um, something more like what the market builds in terms of multifamily housing. And thus people have a better opportunity to live and work in Scapoose if they choose to. So, so some of your policy changes, you know, it, it takes a number of years to really filter through. Um, but you're seeing that, that policy change working.
Great, thank you.
Mm hmm.
Anything else?
I have a few more slides, not many. Okay, so then next steps. The next steps are the really boring part, honestly. Um, if you thought this was technical, the next part gets worse. Um, so we're looking at, does Scapoose need an urban growth boundary, uh, expansion? So, um, does Scapoose have enough land, um, within the urban growth boundary to accommodate growth? If the answer was yes, then you don't need any further action. Um, the answer is no. So then we look at land use efficiency measures. So changes to the zoning code, um, changes to how land is zoned, so the zoning map, other policy changes. And then you say, does Scapoose have enough land now within the urban growth boundary to accommodate growth? If the answer then is yes, then you don't need an urban growth boundary expansion. If the answer then is no, then you do need an urban growth boundary expansion. And you go through the process for, uh, doing that expansion of establishing study areas. Then there's specific, uh, priority scheme and the state statutes that defines where you can go. Um, and, uh, eventually you, uh, expand your UGB, your adoption process, state acknowledgement. So if you just piggyback on top of this, also establishing urban reserves, um, uh, we'll, we'll be sussing all of that out, um, through the, um, 20-year land need and then the 30-year land need on top of that. So a lot of this is very, very similar. Um, the part that, that Lori is very concerned with and Peter would be very concerned with about the findings of that, there's technical differences, but I hope you never have to read that whole document because it's not interesting. So that's, that's where we're going next. I think the exciting part, there's two exciting parts. There's the land use efficiency measures, um, and then where does our state system, what options are there? Um, uh, I can tell you, because I'll be talking about this a little bit at the annual town meeting, that the, uh, areas we'll be looking at are areas around the city that are in existing county zoning. So areas, uh, to the south, um, uh, there's some areas a little bit to the north, areas to the west. That is right, yes, the west are very constrained with, you know, steep slopes and that kind of thing. We, we won't be taking you into it. Areas with big landslide hazards, um, those kind of things, that's, that's not good planning. We won't be doing that. Um, areas to the east of you, good farmland, um, and that's the lowest priority for expansion. So I think I feel confident in produce, uh, in predicting that we won't go, be going most areas to the east. There's one or two areas that we should consider, um, that are in county zoning already. So.
Yes, what areas you say we would be expanding to? I didn't quite get that.
They're in county zoning currently. Those will be the highest priority. I don't know exactly where they'll be right now, but some of the areas that are in county zoning, um, currently are areas to the south. You've got a, some areas to the north that are in county zoning. Little tiny area to the east that is in county zoning right next to the city. Limits that I think we'll have to look at pretty closely. And a lot of the areas to the west are really constrained. Um, and so there may be spot areas we look at, um, but they're constrained with, with natural hazards, that kind of thing. So we'll be looking at the areas that are in county zoning currently that aren't in farmer or forest use.
And so you're, excuse me, sorry, continue. It seems like all those areas have constraints and, uh, it's going to be
Mm hmm.
find what you're looking for.
Uh huh. And you also get to consider, um, uh, in areas that are similar to each other, you get to consider where it's more efficient to, uh, provide services. Um, and so hopefully we'll be able to bring that as far into the analysis as we can so that we're not looking at bringing in areas that, that, um, are financially, uh, bad areas, um, for the city in terms of cost of services. Um, that's, that's not good policy either.
But do you look at to bring those into our reserve first, urban reserve?
Uh, that all has to be worked out through the, uh, through the process. There'll be a certain amount that if we need an urban growth boundary expansion, I expect the city to need at least a modest urban growth boundary expansion, something smaller than what we're looking at now. Um, then we'll identify those specific areas. And so imagine if you had, you know, an area here that was right, right up to the, the city and then an area down here that is not up to the city, but, but a budding. You'd bring in this one first and you'd look at this one for urban reserves because you don't want to, you don't want to leapfrog. That, that's bad planning and I don't think it would be allowed under our system.
So you're able to help with that. Who, who else does that? The city, the staff? Do we look at urban growth boundary area? Do we hire consultants? I mean, do we?
She's right here.
That's it.
Yes.
That's part of the process, yep.
We'll be working closely with staff and, uh, and your attorney on those things to make sure that we're dotting the i's and crossing the t's.
Perfect.
And, uh, this is, you know, the next step, the whole project, uh, continuing on. Um, we think at this point, we're probably going to go a little beyond June 2024. We'll probably go into, uh, I'm guessing September 2024 or so, because we've been going a little bit slower as we've been, you know, having the discussions that are necessary to have, that kind of thing. I don't think it has big budget implications for the city, for this project or anything like that. We've been talking very carefully about those. Um, I think it's important to give people the time to, to digest and to understand things.
And there was a bit of a delay too in just working through the population forecast.
There really was.
With Portland State University, because we wanted to, to get that updated first and luckily, uh, that has been done, so.
Indeed. Are there any other questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
And that is, um, you talk about, you know, town meetings and stuff like that. I think one of the things that's brought up by the public at least is traffic generation. We're going to grow, we're going to create more traffic. Have you looked into projections on that?
And that would be done in your transportation system plan, of which I have no expertise.
Okay, so that'll be another thing.
That's a, a different consultant, certainly.
Mayor, I have a question. Beth, I have, uh, two questions. The first is clarification. When you say county zoning, do you mean, is that generally land that's outside of the UGB?
Yeah, in rural residential or rural commercial zoning.
Okay, thank you. Um, my other question is, does any part of your work or any part of the 50-year plan include looking at the staff and the resources that it will take to be able to do things like an urban growth boundary expansion?
No.
That is a heavy lift.
Uh, that is a heavy lift and presumably, um, the city has hired us to help them through the urban growth boundary expansion. Um, and, um, I don't like having, uh, uh, I like having it happen so that, that, you know, it gets adopted by the city, it gets adopted by the county, the state acknowledges it and then nobody, um, nobody, uh, challenges it. Of course, not all of that is, is in my control. Um, so we've got you to the point, um, on this project where we, I expect us to be doing something that, uh, the state will acknowledge. Um, and that hopefully the county, you know, we've, we've done our job and working closely enough with the county that the county will be on board with it. Um, whether it is challenged by an outside group is, is, that's just, I can't, uh, can't predict that.
Yeah, I under, I understand that. Um, just from some of the conversations that I've had, um, you know, some of these things that are coming up look like they will take a lot of resources from city staff to be able to accomplish. And, um, if we do need additional resources and we need to budget for that, um, that in of itself is a long process. And so I'm just wondering if we have bookmarks, so to speak, to basically look at those, how, how these different things, um, are going to affect staff or, or FTE positions that are needed to be able to even execute these things that we're planning.
Well, I can speak to that just briefly. Um, again, as Beth said, the, we, we're bringing her on board or she is on board to help us through the adoption process. As far as implementing, uh, you know, there will be updates to the development code, to the comp plan, to the maps, et cetera. Um, that, that would then, that code would apply to any future land use application just like our current code applies to our current, um, application. So, so long as they are on board to be with us through the adoption process itself, um, that kind of takes care of the concern. Um, and then moving forward, it's just applying the code we have. So in that way, I don't see it being, you know, any different than it is now. It's just different code we're applying.
Thank you. So, and this may be my own, um, just lack of education on this. So if we were to do, or need to do a UGB expansion, where would that come in? At what point in this process would, would that come in and then?
Yeah, so that's, that's after June. So that's essentially, you can see that last arrow pointing to the right, un, under adoption. That is adoption of the That is adoption of the urban reserves and UGB expansion. That's part of this. That's the last step of this project that we're working on.
Okay, yeah, and I know that you're present at all these meetings too and would be tapping on Alex's shoulder saying, hey, you know, we need additional resources to be able to pull this off. So I'm appreciative of that. Just when I, when I'm looking through this, I just see all the work that is going to have to be done from staff and I want to make sure that we're mindful.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it's the reason why, as we kicked this off, I stated that I had to have an intern or someone helping through this process. And then again, as I stayed on and transitioned into Community Development Director, there was a position opened for Associate Planner, which luckily, we have NJ. So that is the additional staff. Obviously, I'm running the planning department, so I couldn't take on this whole project and process every application that comes through the door and be successful with so much work. So it has helped tremendously to have NJ on board. And we, it's still a lot. And I appreciate your recognition of that. And we have a very competent consultant team. So getting through this process, I think we're looking good.
Thank you, Beth, thank you.
Certainly. And I will say that we've been carefully communicating with Lori about budget and making sure that we are using budget efficiently and in the right places.
Yes. Sorry, real quick, can you remind people or me when the last urban growth boundary expansion was?
Let's see. It was adopted in 2010, I believe. We were successful with the appeal in 2015. 2016, it might have been late 2015 because I know in 2016, the annexation of the properties was initiated.
And then I think we did our comp plan amendment, code amendment. It was all complete in 2017.
Mm-hmm.
Recollection. So your hopes is not a five-year time period?
Can I tell you, I've worked with the City of McBinville that it was almost a 30-year time period? Uh-huh. Luckily, you're not in Yamhill County.
Our UGB expansion of over 300 acres was very successful. It's a big deal. So now the land, the developer very quickly annexed in that land once the appeal was resolved. The subsequent year after it was annexed in, it was approved for a four-phase subdivision. We have recorded the first two phases of those plats. We're about to sign the third-phase plat. And so this is why we're set up in such a good position with our industrial land supply.